Call the regular meeting of the City Council, May 2, 2016, to order. If you please stand, I'll ask Councilman Forrest Fleming to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on Larry Britt, a retired Morganton Department of Public Safety Chaplain, to lead us in our invocation, please.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this beautiful place that you give us from your bounty. We thank you that by your grace we are created in your image as members, one and all, of one great family. Look with compassion on this, your family, and grant us grace and wisdom to find our way through whatever obstacles may threaten to separate and divide us. Lead us in our deliberations this evening to make wise decisions that will benefit everyone who lives and works in this fair land. Protect us by your might, surround us with your love, grant us your peace, and bring us to serve you and one another in harmony and goodwill through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I'd like to introduce the City Council to my far right, Forrest Fleming, City Council. Our City Attorney, Lily Vina, thank you for being here, Lily. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your Mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Councilman. John Cantrell, City Council. And Kelly Russell, our City Clerk. Is Becky Brinkley here?
She is.
I can't see her. Becky is interpreting for the deaf community. Thank you so much. We have several retiree resolutions. I'd like to read the first one, please. A resolution honoring Joseph A. Plometti. Whereas Joseph A. Plometti was employed by the City of Morganton as Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on February 21, 1995, completed his field training on July 3, 1995, was promoted to Sergeant on December 13, 1999, promoted to Captain on March 15, 2004, transferred from Captain of B Platoon to Captain of Criminal Investigations Division on March 3, 2007. And whereas Joseph A. Plometti has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Safety Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefits of the citizens of Morganton for 22 years and seven months, and whereas Joseph A. Plometti retired from the City of Morganton as Captain of the Criminal Investigations Division in the Public Safety Department on May 1, 2016, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Joseph A. Plometti and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Joseph A. Plometti, adopted this second day of May, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I'll ask John Cantrell if he'll make the presentation. And Joseph, if you'll come forward, please.
May we accept the resolution?
Let's do accept the resolution. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution? Forrest, thank you for making that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Captain Plometti, we're going to miss you very much. You have served this community with honor, with distinction, and with just something special. And what you've done for this city, not many of us know, and I'd just like, on behalf of the Council and all of the coworkers, just thank you very much. Here's the resolution. Two checks.
I'll take this.
There it goes.
Thank you very much.
We do want to have a consideration of a service weapon and fire services. You have a motion in your package. Do I have a motion to declare the surplus weapon Glock 23, General IV, serial number XPHO21, and Paul Conway American Classic Fire Service Helmet, serial number LH00071915, be sold and presented to retired Detective Plometti? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. A motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
My dollar, with mixed emotions.
Let's see another resolution. We have another resolution. That resolution honors Philip W. Whiston. Whereas Philip W. Whiston was employed by the City of Morganton as Pipe Mechanic in the Water Resources Department on March 4, 1996, transferred to Distribution and Collection System Operator on July 1, 2004, promoted to Senior Distribution and Collection System Operator on February 5, 2008, and whereas Philip W. Whiston has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Water Resources Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 21 years and seven months, and whereas Philip W. Whiston retired from the City of Morganton as Senior Distribution and Collection Systems Operator in the Water Resources Department on May 1, 2016, and whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Philip W. Whiston and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the Mayor present this resolution to Philip W. Whiston, adopted this second day of May, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilman Simmons, would you present that resolution?
Philip, on behalf of the City, we appreciate your two and three o'clock in the morning and all nights fixing our water lines in the 95-degree weather and in the 20-degree weather. Now, we talked about this previously. You said if you got a check, you'd probably buy me a biscuit in the morning.
Yeah.
We got three checks, so we're going to have to move that up to steak and eggs. Say what you'd like to say, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Philip, thank you so much.
Thank you for the service.
We also have the presentation of service pins. The City Staff and Personnel Committee decided to recognize long-term employees for years of service on their 20, 25, or 30 years of service. Tonight, we have a service pin. I think Councilman Forrest Fleming is going to present it to Danny Lyle, our Fire Engineer. He's been in public safety 20 years. Danny, if you'll come forward, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
How many, how many more?
I'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under our public advocacy and issues, our upcoming events at Kama Once, which is a new musical, will be Wednesday, this Wednesday, May 4, at 7:30. I didn't realize that, Sally, but it has won eight Tony Awards and one Grammy Award. So it really, we're excited for this to becoming a musical, to becoming Two Kama on Wednesday. Our Farmer's Market continues on Wednesday on North Green Street and Saturdays at the Morganton Depot. Our TGIF concert begins this Friday, May 6, with a cruise-in and a concert on the Old Courthouse Square. The TGIF will be held Fridays in May, June, and July. We also have a proclamation. We have two proclamations tonight. The first is a proclamation honoring National Nursing Home Month. And if you'll bear with me, I'll read that proclamation. Whereas, we honor and respect our elders and citizens of any age with physical or intellectual disabilities who reside in skilled nursing care centers in Morganton and Burke County. And whereas skilled nursing care centers throughout our area are holding events in observance of National Nursing Home Week, using this year's theme of, quote, "It's a small world with a big heart," end quote. And whereas I urge all citizens to visit a loved one, family member, or friend residing in any care setting and offer a kind word, a personal touch, and time spent participating in various activities as a way to help those in all walks of life who are in need of our continuing love and support. And whereas the City of Morganton is committed to quality health care, we take this moment to embrace the spirit of the theme, "It's a Small World with a Big Heart." Let's join all residents, patients, caregivers, nurses, other staff, and visitors in celebrating their special week. Now therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, as Mayor Morganton, declared the week of May 8 through 14, 2016, as National Nursing Home Week, a week to honor our vulnerable citizens who receive care and those dedicated to giving care. Adopted this day, the second day of May, 2016, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Gentlemen and ladies, tonight we have Christina Franklin, our Ombudsman from the Western Piedmont Council of Government Area Agency on Aging. Christine, if you'll come to the microphone.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a word?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all of you for inviting me and for this recognition for all of our citizens residing in nursing facilities. Burke County is served by six nursing facilities. Four of these facilities are located in Morganton. There are approximately 627 beds. Each one of these beds represents a person. I urge each and every citizen to visit their local nursing facility, not just next week, but all throughout the year. This year's National Nursing Home Week theme, "It's a Small World with a Big Heart," brings to light the familial relationships between staff and residents of nursing facilities. As the Regional Ombudsman, I can't begin to tell you how important these relationships are for some of our residents, as many of them have no family or friends to visit. Each quarter, our Burke County Community Advisory Committee visits each nursing home to talk with the residents to ensure that they have a voice. These committee members volunteer their time to advocate for nursing home residents. While not everyone has the time to serve on a committee, there is always opportunity for each of us to help. I encourage each of you not only to visit your local nursing facility, but also to contact the administrators or activity coordinators to find out how you can help make every day special for a nursing home resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Our second proclamation is to declare Bike Month in Morganton. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Morganton's scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Morganton, Burke County, and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Morganton, Burke County's road, greenway, and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Morganton, Burke County, supporting student learning outcomes, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas the City of Morganton will be promoting bicycling during the month of May, 2016, and whereas the City of Morganton is also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors, to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions, and whereas the City of Morganton is also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve the health and safety for everyone on the road. Now therefore, our Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morganton, to hereby proclaim May as Bike Month in Morganton, Burke County, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance, adopted on this day, the 2nd of May, 2016. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Accepting this proclamation is Charlotte Edson, our Burke Coordinator for the Catalyst of Healthy Eating and Active Living. Charlotte, if you'll come to the microphone, please.
Is there an acronym for that?
No, it's a mouthful every time I introduce myself.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, thank you so much for this proclamation. I really appreciate it. I wanted to just take a couple of moments to tell a little bit of what's been going on in the county. I am the Burke County Coordinator for Healthy Eating and Active Living. What does that really mean? I am basically working in our county to focus on any access increase that we can to help everyone in the county, and in our city especially today, to increase their access to activity of any kind. It doesn't have to necessarily be exercising. It could be walking, moving, playing, any type of activity. So some things from hereforth out are going to be things about encouraging through education, through Burke County Public Schools. And we have just recently delivered 30 bicycles to Burke County Public Schools as of Friday to add that to their curriculum, starting in 2016, 2017, to where it just makes our children more aware for bikeability and walkability, which then just helps them to grow up to be safer adults for our community and continue to grow healthy people. So in closing, I just appreciate, again, your time, and thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing everyone out and about this month. I do encourage you, on Friday, May 20, there is going to be a Bike-to-Work Day. If you're willing to take a moment to leave your car at home and can bike to work, I encourage you to. And we also have a BMX Bike Show for children and bike safety going along with our TGIF show that night. So just a full month full of biking and activity. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Charlotte. Next on our agenda, the North Carolina Municipal Power Agenda, number one. Sally, any updates?
No report tonight.
Okay. Next, our Consent Agenda. I believe we have at least six items on the Consent Agenda. Sally?
We do. We have six items, and those are considered to be non-controversial and routine would ask that you consider approving those in one motion unless somebody wants something discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, we have four sets of minutes. We did a lot of meeting in March and early April. We have an ordinance that schedules temporary closure of a street for the 2016 Hop Race, budget amendment to receive funds from the NRA to purchase skeet at the skeet range, and that amount is $5,367. A budget amendment for $244,268 to receive the financing money from the bank to buy the new garbage truck. We have a budget amendment to receive $105,000 from the State of North Carolina for the Main Street grants that you have been awarding, and also the expenditure that goes along with that. And then a budget amendment to increase the additional funds for sidewalk work at Exit 105 by $2,828.
Do any members wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Not to have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, our series of public hearings. Our first public hearing will be a consideration of the City of Morganton Community Development Block Grant for those who've heard me struggle with CDBG and the entitlement program action for the fiscal year 2016. So I now call a public hearing to consider the Community Development Block Grant entitlement program for the fiscal year of 2016. Does anyone wish to speak about this block grant?
And we have Lisa Helton here to talk about the action plan and what is included in that for the audience, in case that spurs someone to want to speak.
Okay. Good evening. This is the second year in our five-year consolidated plan. This year, we will continue with the same activities that we had last year, which are our small business loan, public infrastructure improvements, clearance in a spot, slum, and block area, grants to nonprofits and administration.
So we will need to take three actions.
We do.
The first will be a motion to approve and adopt the fiscal year 2016.
Excuse me if I may. You would need to close the public hearing first.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Public hearing be closed on this issue, and we need to, a motion to adopt or approve the fiscal year 2016 CDBG action plan. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve and adopt the City of Morganton Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program Action Plan for fiscal year 2016.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need a motion to approve a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government for the Grant Management Assistance.
We do. Before we do that, could I ask you to do the project budget ordinance, which actually sets up the category, so we have a category to pay her?
I think that's what John just read.
No, I think he did the action plan. Your project budget is really, it's a $254,190 project budget, because remember, this one carries over with funds that aren't spent from year to year. The new money is, correct me when I'm wrong, $150,745.
That's right.
And that's what we will get. But the total budget is $254,190 because we have money left over from previous years.
That's correct.
Okay. Then the motion to approve the project budget ordinance for 2016 Community Development Block Grant entitlement program.
I move we approve the project budget ordinance for 2016 Community Development Block Grant entitlement program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay.
Now we have our contract with the COG, which is our third action on the same set of stuff.
Okay. We have a motion, we need a motion, please, to approve a contract with Western Piedmont Council of Government for the Grant Management Assistant in relation to the 2016 CDBG entitlement program grant. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay. I call a public hearing to consider amending Appendix A. 4 of the zoning ordinance to redefine motor vehicle and boat services to include bodywork. Louis, would you bring us up to date why we need to do this?
Certainly. And as you can see from your agenda, there are a series of four public hearings. This is the first one concerning zoning amendments. Each one is slightly different, so there's a separate public hearing. This one is very straightforward. In our new zoning ordinance that you adopted, has it been over a year now? I'm losing track of time. As you know, it's very lengthy, it made many changes, and it was a whole new effort. And as we, the Development Design Department goes into applying that ordinance and putting into effect in the real world, we find some issues that come up, have come up, that weren't expected, and also some minor oversights that weren't caught in the final form of the ordinance. This is one of those. The ordinance provides for motor vehicle and boat services in certain zones. Unfortunately, the definition section defined it in such a way that it did not include automobile bodywork, and therefore, there was no place in the city technically that would allow, be zoned properly for motor vehicle bodywork. This proposed amendment would simply correct that to extend the definition of services to include bodywork.
Would anyone wish to speak in the public hearing? Declare the public hearing closed.
And if I may add one other thing, Mr. Mayor, for each of these amendments, in addition to moving, of course, that the ordinance be amended, you, as with any other zoning change, you need a motion to confirm that the requested amendment is in compliance with Morganton's Mission 2030 goals.
Okay.
I move to confirm that the requested amendment is in compliance with the Morganton Mission 2030 goals and objectives.
So I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to adopt a zoning ordinance amendment to Appendix A. 4 to redefine motor vehicle and boat services to include bodywork.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to call a public hearing to amend Section 4.2.4 and Section 4.2.5 of the zoning ordinance to clarify and reference an exception to the 35-foot maximum height requirement for non-residential buildings within the high intensity district. Would anybody like to speak concerning this particular item? Louis, would you bring us up to date?
And I might add, Lee Anderson is here also, if you have any more technical questions. This is one of those situations where the staff determined that it, the ordinance was somewhat unclear. There's a 35-foot maximum height requirement in the high intensity district for non-residential buildings, but the references were unclear to that, so these changes, one of them would make that easy to locate that reference. The other change is to make clear that there is a 75-foot absolute maximum building height within that district. Is that right, Lee? Have I got that right?
Okay. Would anybody like to speak concerning the 35-foot maximum height requirement for non-residential buildings? I'll close the public hearing.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I should have said this on the First Amendment, but it applies to all four of them. All four of these were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at its last regularly scheduled meeting. All were heard and discussed there, and all four, as it states in your materials, were recommended for adoption by the P&amp;Z.
Do I have a motion?
I move we confirm the requested amendment is in compliance with the Morganton Mission 2030 goals and objectives.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes.
I move we adopt a zoning ordinance amendment to Section 4.2.4 and Section 4.2.5 to clarify and reference an exception to the 35-foot maximum height requirement for non-residential buildings within the high intensity district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Call a public hearing to amend Table 3.1 of the zoning ordinance to include single-family dwellings as a permitted use within the high intensity district. Would anybody like to speak on the zoning ordinance to include single-family dwellings as a permitted use? Public hearing is closed. I ask City Attorney to, is this another example?
This is...
This is, this is literally the letter P. The only problem here was that, as you know, there is, the table of permitted uses for each use specifies in what of the, our six districts it can be permitted. There was never any intention not to permit single-family dwellings in the HID district. There are hundreds of them already in Morganton. It just, in typing it up, the letter P was left out of the table, so we're clarifying that.
Okay. We won't all, I won't even go there. Okay. Gentlemen, what's your wish?
Motion to confirm that the requested amendment is in compliance with the Morganton Mission 2030 goals and objectives.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Motion to adopt an ordinance amending Table 3.1 of the zoning ordinance to include single-family dwellings as a permitted use within the high-intensity district.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Call a public hearing to consider amending Section 5.4.2 of the zoning ordinance to allow wall signage upon existing mansard roofs. Would anybody like to speak concerning signage upon existing mansard roofs? Declare the public hearing closed. Ask our city attorney.
I'll, this is actually a little more substantive. Staff discovered as, in starting to implement the, the new ordinance, that as written, this could, the limitation on wall signage could create a burden, unfair burden on some pre-existing businesses where the building has, Lee, how, what's a simple description of a mansard roof?
A mansard roof is the, the roof that comes straight down from, from the peak and it is basically an extension of the, of a roof line. You see a lot of these on flat buildings, and they'll build these faux mansard roofs that come up. Makes the building look taller to obscure a lot of the heating and air conditioning equipment, but it has shingles all the way around the building. But it's pretty much flat and perpendicular, which is not tall.
And there are numerous commercial buildings in Morganton where there is some kind of signage on the front of that kind of, of roof. And it was, staff determined it really was not the intention to make those, to forbid them to be repaired or replaced, basically. So, the recommendation was to alter the ordinance to permit, and again, correct me if I'm wrong here, Lee, but to permit those kind of signs to, within the limitations generally for wall signs on the front of a mansard type roof.
Anyone like to speak now that they understand mansard roofs? We'd be glad to take any comments. Public hearing will be closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
I move to confirm that the requested amendment is in compliance with the Morganton Mission 2030 goals and objectives.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to adopt an ordinance amendment amending Section 5.4.2 of the zoning ordinance to allow wall signage upon existing mansard roofs.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
I feel the need to tell you that Lee has told me today that if this wasn't fun enough, we have more coming in June. So, bring the crowds, build the anticipation.
Whoopie. Call a public hearing of a possible nuisance at 106 Meeting Place in consideration of an ordinance to abate a nuisance.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is technically a different kind of public hearing from all those we've had. This is actually a hearing on a matter that the, that you called a hearing on and we have served notice of it upon the property owner, Ms. Lindhart, whom I do not see here.
Okay.
However, I know that, that Terry Jordan from the staff is here and is prepared to, to testify about the circumstances of this property. This is on a code enforcement issue, but it's, it's somewhat similar in nature to hearings you all have held previously on condemnation matters. This is not a condemnation. This is a nuisance claim. I, I think I'll leave it at that and Terry is here to speak in, in more detail on it.
Terry, these pictures are pictures you've taken recently?
Yes, sir. If Chad will go back a little bit. Let me see those again and I can tell you, I took some additional photographs today to show some of the work that Ms. Lindhart had done since this notice was issued. This has been an ongoing issue for many, many, many years and she's an elderly resident of the city. And as you can see here, she cleaned off the front porch of the residence. That was when it was taken today. This area, it's been cleaned a little bit. It's difficult to tell that, but it has been cleaned a little bit. This, there's a few items missing, but they're still much, much still there. And this picture, as you can see, there's a path that's cleared in there that wasn't there thirty days ago. It's very limited. This looks very much, there's some things missing. If you could compare the previous photographs to these today, there are some items missing and when we talked with her, she expressed that she would like to be able to do that herself, but she's over eighty years of age. She's elderly. She has some cancer issues with potential skin cancer. We've made offers to her to provide a city truck to stay there for a period of time for her to dispose of items in there. She's never elected to, to use that, that we've offered to her. She says that she has someone helping her, but I've never seen anyone there on the site. It's, like I say, it's been years that this has been going on. She's done a few things. She's removed a couple vehicles in the past. Just barely enough to let you know that she has tried to do something, but I think it's beyond her ability to do what's there. There's too much that's been collected there and it's actually a health and sanitation issue with all the bags. There's multiple bags, as you can see from all the photographs. There's no idea what's in the bags. I inherited this case, actually, when I came to this department and it's gotten worse over the years. And I've spoken with Ms. Lindhart on multiple, multiple occasions and tried to work with her and tried to rationalize with her about what we could assist her with and help her to do. But it's not wanting to get rid of things. It's, she collects these things and I've had neighbors say that she goes out, or I've had other people say she goes out and collects things and brings them back. There, there's the buildings that are there, there are bags that are protruding out of the buildings just like they're so full, the bags are pushing out. And she has wood that's there in the yard that's covered with tarps and plastic and different things to where you really can't tell what's under it. I mean, there's some wood, but you, you can't tell, as you can see from the photographs, there's no way to know what's in all of that. There've been neighborhood complaints about rodents and wild animals that, that have been, I think maybe Public Safety had captured some animals there and she would quote, looking at this picture, she'd say, well, that's wood that's there. Well, it is, but I pointed out to her, there are a lot of other items there with it that are not supposed to be outside the house. I've tried to ask her if she would consent to let the city go in and do the cleanup and she has expressed that she wants to do that herself. She provided myself and Russ Cochrane with a letter when we were there several weeks ago from her doctor stating that her blood pressure is extremely high. Mr. Vannay has a copy of the letter and that she needed more time and that she has no family or friends that will help her and they asked that she be allowed more time to get the home area cleaned up because of her blood pressure. I told her she needed to follow her doctors, what the doctor tells her to do, but that this needs to be taken care of and that it's become an issue because of other properties. We are trying to work in that area to do some other things and in doing that, this becomes pointed out that this is one. She mentioned when we were there, the, the house next door that had burned and it's down in rubble there now. Well, the people were being made to clean that up and they said, what about that next door? So, it's become a stumbling block to get other things done at this point in time. We've tried to work with her, I have, because of her age and the situation that she was in, an area where there are a lot of other issues there that, that didn't look exactly appealing. So, her place there, but now it's being opened up. The house next door is burned. My building inspector has worked with the people there and I think they've been under like a six-month plan to remove the rest of that demolition debris. There's work across the street that the council's addressing about buildings to have those removed. So, this is another link in that area to try to clean up and it's a much-needed area because of the health and sanitation of all the items there, because I have no idea what all is there and in the buildings, which I know we can't do anything exactly with the buildings, but what is coming out on the ground, I think she needs help with that. But we don't have mental health resources to try to help negotiate some of those things. So, the option would be for the city to go in there and get a company to come in and try to clean up that area and make it as healthy and sanitary as possible for herself as well as the surrounding properties because of the wild animals too that are apparently coming into the issue.
Anybody else like to speak during the public hearing on the situation at 106 Meeting Place?
Got a question for Terry. Am I, am I reading this, we've had a problem, this location for twenty-five years?
Yes, sir. I inherited a portion of it in nineteen ninety-one and it's just progressed further as time's gone on.
I think we have one other member who'd like, citizen who'd like to, if you'll come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Liette Chris Taylor and I live at seven twelve East Meeting Street. And I have spoke with Ms. Lindhart several times about it. I've known her since eighty-five, nineteen eighty-five. We have rats, big rats coming in our houses. We have possums, we have skunks coming in and I'm, like I've said, I've spoke to her several times. I've even talked to my husband and he's offered to help her clean this up. And it's like she said, there's, she's not gonna let anybody go in and help her. Yeah, I agree. She has health problems. She's a hoarder. But she, we shouldn't have to put up with that. I mean, she's just, you'd say something to one, it goes in one ear and out the other one. She goes to the car washes and she picks up trash bags. She pick up milk jugs. That's what's under those tarps. And like I don't think she's gonna be able, she's not gonna be able to do it herself. She does need someone to help her get that stuff up.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Declare the public hearing closed.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I
You can.
realize I should have said one other thing, which is that Ms. Lindhart came to my office Friday by herself and fully aware that the hearing was tonight and asked, could, could that be postponed? And I advised her that she would have to present that issue to the council and she said, well, she might not make it. And I told her I would pass that fact along to the council.
What's the wishes of the council, please?
Motion to declare a public nuisance on the property 106 Meeting Place owned by Ms. Ray Lindhart.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. We have to adopt, I think, an order. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt an ordinance and order requiring abatement of the nuisance at 106 Meeting Place and providing that if the owner does not comply, complete such abatement, the city directly through a contractor shall abate the nuisance and asses of the full cost thereof of the property owner placing a lien on the property for such cost if not promptly paid.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, one thing, in the proposed, the draft ordinance and order, when I was drafting this, I was anticipating Ms. Lindhart might be here and it, I will change the one that's finally adopted because she, it says that she appeared in person and obviously she did not.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
A question for Louis or whomever is appropriate. What kind of schedule will this be on? Do we have any?
In the ordinance, and very much like you do with the condemnation ordinances, it provides that it doesn't take effect for thirty days. In effect, giving her a thirty-day grace period if she can get it cleaned up. Otherwise, city staff can, once that's over, staff will contract to do that as, and it probably will have to be a contractor, by the way. Can do it at any time after that.
So, we'll go ahead and try to talk to someone and see if we can have somebody lined up in the event that it doesn't happen in those thirty days.
Just to let the council know also, she has no trespassing signs posted, so probably have to work with Mr. Vannay about, I don't know if this will require an administrative warrant to do this or not because of going on someone's property and removing.
We'll, we'll be careful to comply. Once, of course, the order and ordinance will be recorded. It'll be public record and will be served upon her and posted on the property. But we will be careful to follow any requirements, not to violate the law.
Okay.
I don't want it to look like it, we're punishing an eighty-some-year-old lady, but if we've been fooling with this thing for twenty-five years, it's about time we get on with the program.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, next on our agenda, we are going to delay under other business, item number one. We'll move straight into item number two. Consideration of entering into a CDBG, Small Business Loan Agreement with JS Winston Incorporated, doing business as Buck's Pizza. Sally?
We have a request for a loan at Buck's Pizza. As you are aware, they relocated to Morgan and Trading Company, our neighbors. Thank goodness, because lots of days without it, I wouldn't get any lunch. So, we're very grateful to have them here. They have requested a CDBG small business loan, looking at fifteen thousand dollars. They are seeing increase in their business. Their sales have increased by about nineteen percent since they have moved here and they're looking at increasing that another three percent. And they would like to do outdoor seating. They would like to improve their patio seating and their outdoor service area and that is what this loan would be for. And they are also looking at employing two additional qualifying employees for the CDBG program. So, we'd present that to you tonight. Lee is here if we have any other questions and I believe the owners are also here.
Would they like to address the council?
I just want to take just a minute to thank y'all for considering our application. We're extremely happy to be here downtown, you know, working with a lot of y'all folks every day. Again, next week, next Monday, is our twentieth anniversary. We've been in business in Morganton for twenty years. Again, we appreciate everybody in this county, town, all of our support, all of everybody's support. This town's a hard town to do business in a lot of times. And twenty years for us is pretty special, so again, we appreciate the opportunity and hope that y'all can help our business grow too.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we enter into a fifteen-thousand-dollar Community Development Block Grant Loan Agreement with JS Winston Incorporated for the purposes of purchasing new seating and outdoor dining at three oh five East Union Street.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of award of a loan from the Main Street Solution Revolving Loan Fund to NC Treat LLC and Budget Amendment. Sally?
You'll, you'll recall back in two thousand and ten, we were awarded a state grant through the Main Street program and with that grant money, we elected to set up a revolving loan fund and made loans to downtown businesses and, and have turned those payments around and returned some of those dollars, some of that payback money to do additional loans and create new jobs and support business in downtown. This is one of those and the folks at Treat are looking at upgrading and expanding in their business. I think that they have been pleased with their business and looking at making changes, particularly in the restaurant part of that, with the kitchen and some seating in that part. They are looking at fourteen thousand dollars. That is what we have available in our revolving loan fund to loan and ask you to consider doing that. And for this one, we would need to award that approved, the loan, and the budget amendment.
Do I have a motion?
I move we award a loan in the amount of $14,000 to NC Treat LLC, using monies from the Main Street Solutions Revolving Loan Fund for renovation and business expansion purposes.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move we approve a Main Street loan agreement and budget amendment to appropriate $14,000 for funds loaned to Treat.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I might just say that at the time we did that, the state didn't want us to do part of that as a revolving loan fund. They really discouraged that. They just wanted to hand out the money and be done with it, and we really insisted on it, and it has worked out well for us. It may be killing our staff people and some of that, but it has worked out well for the community.
Next on our agenda is consideration of personnel policy on conflicts of interest. Sally?
It's an exciting night, isn't it?
It sure is.
That's better.
I'm turning this one over to the lawyer, because this is his kind of thing.
Okay, Louis.
I'll give it a try. Our personnel policy for years has had some provisions dealing with what would broadly be considered conflicts of interest. And of course, as you all know, as members of the council, you have an ethical conduct policy as well. However, with all the state and federal grant and loan programs that are out there that we have to deal with regularly, it's become increasingly essential to have a citywide policy on conflicts of interest that will apply to all of our employees, and that's what this proposes to be, providing some more detail as to what conflicts of interest are and what would happen if there is a purported conflict. As you can tell, there are definitions in this proposed policy. And by the way, in drawing it up, I used somewhat as a model the policies of several other cities around western North Carolina, although it's not identical to them. The main thing is to be clear that anybody involved in granting, awarding, or administering any kind of contract or business arrangement does not have a conflict either because they have an ownership interest or business interest, or someone in their immediate family has such an interest, or that they are receiving some kind of, you know, indirect benefit from the contract, and that's the purpose of it.
Okay. What's the council wishes?
Motion to adopt and approve a policy on conflicts of interest applicable to all city employees and elected officials.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I should have added one other thing, if I might, Mr. Mayor. As to members of the council, city manager and assistant manager, city attorney, and the department heads, this policy would also require periodic, and it says every two years, statement of any business interests that, or outside employment that those individuals have. And we will create an appropriate form on which to do that.
It's very similar to what those of us who serve on state boards and commissions already are required to do.
Do I have a motion and a second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under consideration of appointments to boards and commissions, I'd like to appoint Buddy Armour, Jill King, and Gail Jones to the Human Relations Commission for terms to expire on May 3, 2019.
And I believe that leaves one vacancy.
One vacancy to be filled next month. And we have a 30-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions. I'm gonna ask Sally if she would please.
You have a 30-day notice on about 950 boards. That's a little bit of an exaggeration. June is a big time, and we'll be getting information out to you this month. And what you've got here are the terms that are expiring and the individuals serving in those. And then at the June meeting, you will make appointments. We have the Board of Adjustment, Cable Television, Community Appearance, Main Street Advisory, Planning and Zoning, and the Recreation Advisory Boards all have June appointments coming up for those. Oh, and if anybody is interested, and those of you viewing at home, I know there are lots of you, if anyone is interested in serving on any boards and commissions, please contact our office and contact Kelly, and she can get you an application form.
Any council member have anything to bring to the floor? If not, I'd like.
I have one thing. May I share one thing?
You may share one thing.
So today, because I think everybody needs to know this, I was at a meeting this morning, and I was driving back to City Hall, and I had turned off of Green Street at the New Courthouse and was coming up Meeting Street. And I looked ahead at the intersection of Meeting Street and White Street, and I saw a creature crossing the road, and I thought, "That's a strange dog." And I looked again, and it was actually a black bear. And I just thought that I would tell everybody that I saw the bear crossing the road, and tried to follow him into the little neighborhood there, and immediately called Nancy and said, "You have got to call Public Safety, we have got a bear in town." So anyway, and the electric guys were behind me, I was not hallucinating, they verified I really did see a bear.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to tell everybody that.
He's all right, just leave him alone.
Before we adjourn.
Got to eat, too.
I know, I just.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to take a personal note and thank those who express sympathy, and thank those for the passing of my brother. We just miss him tremendously, and I appreciate all the support that people have given me. If not, we stand adjourned.